This is the Audit Finance and Administration Committee Development Charges Hearing, August 21, 2024. We are waiting for quorum.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. Welcome to the Audit Finance and Administration Committee Development Charges Hearings. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
I'd like to remind everyone that electronic devices should be switched to a non-audal function during the committee meetings, and we'll proceed from there. Does any member of this committee have a conflict of interest with respect to the hearing? Seeing none. If members do realize at some point in the hearing that they have a conflict of interest, you need to bring it to the chair's attention right away, and we can address the matter. I'd like to confirm publicly on the microphone here that Counselor Spatafor is attending virtually. He is in his car, but he is not driving the car. So where am I now? I need a mover and a secorder to approve the agenda. Move by Counselor Johnson. Oh, shoot.
Say what now?
Yeah. We've been dealing with the school trustees, so Counselor Taddeuson and Counselor Beatty. All those in favor? Carried. My apologies, everyone. We've done number two. Okay, so we are now moving on to item 3.1, which is the development charges complaint, One School Global, 441 Old Brock Road, Hamilton. The preliminary matter is it will be the order of evidence and exclusion of any irrelevant evidence. City Hamilton Representative Bruce Engel, is that correctly pronounced?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Please proceed.
Thank you, sir. So the lawyer for the complainant and I have worked out an agreed statement of facts and a document book that goes with them. And I think that was intended to be in lieu of witnesses, but my friend has advised that there's a component that she would like to call a witness to address that's sort of on top of what's in this agreement. So I think we-
To be clear, we do not have an agreed statement of facts yet.
Well, it's not comprehensive, sir. So my friend advised late yesterday that she was going to be calling a witness. And so that's, I think that also affects the sequence of how we should proceed. So-
So we have a package of evidence, and we also have an agreed statement of facts. Are you presenting then anything from the evidence, or are you presenting the agreed statement of facts from the city?
From the city, I'll be relying on the great statement of facts-
Thank you.
-and the document book. And there may be something from the evidence of the witness, which we haven't heard yet, so I don't know what that will be. But that, once that evidence is in, then you'll have the complete package, and you can hear submissions from counsel on that. And other than a brief introduction that I was going to give now, my friend and I have discussed, my suggestion is that as the complainant, they should probably argue first. I would respond, and then she would have a right of reply. I understand sometimes this committee may not proceed in that order, and so we're in your hands, of course. But normally, the complaining party or the plaintiff would go first, and we would respond. So the introduction I wanted to provide was simply about what we are doing here.
So before we proceed, Mr. Engel, I need a motion from the committee to receive this document as the first record and this document as the second item, so that there are evidence. Right?
Yes. It's not in here, but yes.
So the big book would be number one, and the agreed statement of facts would be number two. And then you can proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
And just to put it on the record, my friend and I have agreed to these documents for this committee proceeding-
Understood.
...with freedom if there were to be further proceedings beyond that to depart from them. But my friend wanted me to make that clear.
Okay. Walk through what you want to submit.
As my introduction, at tab 16 of document one, on page 277, this is an OMB decision on an appeal from a complaint decision, such as we're doing today. And at paragraph four, it makes clear what this exercise is about, because the tribunal's jurisdiction is the same as this committee's. And you'll see in what's known as, shown as sub one, I guess, of paragraph four, "The board has a more limited jurisdiction on an appeal on the complaint as to the application of the bylaw than on an appeal as to the bylaw itself." And you'll be familiar, of course, that as members of counsel, the development charge bylaw is prepared and comes to counsel for its approval, and the shape of that bylaw, in accordance with, obviously, the legal parameters around it, is up to counsel. But once it's established, this complaint procedure is to deal with one of three things: an incorrect calculation, whether credit is available or was incorrectly calculated, or an error in the application of the bylaw. And by analogy, to, again, to planning matters, this is not a committee of adjustment, where you can tweak the bylaw and make exceptions and so on. It's those three steps. And so, and just before paragraph two on that page, "The board under a complaint under section 20 cannot amend the bylaw as it might under an appeal of the bylaw itself." So that's really the framework that you're operating with.
Is this exactly where that is on page 277?
Just at the end of the inset number, paragraph one, just before it turns to paragraph two, the last, it's a one-sentence paragraph.
Point one and the last paragraph.
Yes. "The board under a complaint under section 20 cannot amend the bylaw as it might under an appeal of the bylaw itself." In the same way, by analogy, counsel, of course, you can pass the bylaw, you can amend your DC bylaw. This committee on a complaint is dealing with those three items and not the sort of general merits of, or wisdom of, the bylaw itself. So that sets the stage. And with that, I would turn it over to my friend to start with her witness, and then follow up with-
So Madam Clerk, if you could swear the witness in, please.
Actually, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. I would like an opportunity to make a brief introduction before, and I'd like to read into the record the agreed statement of facts, because it will inform our submissions and your decision-making. So I think, if I may, I'd like to proceed that way, and then would call my witness, and then provide you with my arguments.
Thank you for that, Madam Clerk. So can I please ask you to identify yourself, please, and the firm that you work for?
Of course. My name is Meader, M-E-A-D-E-R, first name Jennifer, counsel to the complainant, One School Global, and I'm with the firm of TMA Law here in Hamilton.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. And I have provided a written copy of my submissions. I don't know that they need to be marked as an exhibit. It's not evidence. It's just an outline of argument, so I will proceed on that basis. And I'll be following my written submissions fairly closely. As I indicated, I represent Clairville Christian Education Trust, which operates under the name One School Global and is part of the One School Global International Network of Schools. My client owns the land, municipally owned, is 441 Old Brock Road, and it operates a nonprofit Christian school on the property. The school building was formerly a public school prior to its purchase by my client, and my client purchased that property from the Hamilton Wentworth District School Board in August of 2022. In terms of a summary of my client's position on this complaint, my client completed renovations to the building in early 2023, prior to opening to its students in April of 2023. The renovations included gutting the interior of the building and creating a modern, open-concept learning environment. A fundraising store for use by the parents, teachers, and students was also built into one wing of the building. No changes were made to the exterior of the building. The renovations were undertaken on the authority of a building permit that was issued by the city on January 24, 2023, more than a year ago, well more than a year ago. In April of 2023, One School began operating a private school out of the building. A year later, and well more than a year after the building permit had been issued, the city came to my client insisting that it pay almost half a million dollars in development charges. From a plain reading of the Development Charges Act, the city's development charges bylaw, and the applicable case law, it is clear that the city is not permitted to impose DCs after a building permit has been issued. If the city was permitted to impose DCs, it made an error in failing to impose the DCs prior to building permit issuance. It does not have the authority to impose this tax, and we'll see that development charges are a tax, retroactively. And in any event, if it did have the authority to impose DCs, and it is our position that they had no authority to impose DCs, it would be unfair and unjust for the city to put the burden of its error on my client, a not-for-profit educational entity. Secondly, from a plain reading of the bylaw, the renovations undertaken do not constitute development, as that term is defined directly in the bylaw. The bylaw only applies to development, and therefore, DCs are not owing. And thirdly, by requiring One School to pay DCs, the city is not applying its bylaw consistently or fairly. You will hear that there are other private schools that acquired school property, school board properties around the same time as my client, made similar or more extensive renovations, but were not required to pay DCs. And it would be wholly unfair to require One School to pay DCs in these circumstances. So it is our position that for all of these reasons, there was an error in the application of the bylaw, and we will be asking the committee to find that DCs are not owing in this case. So at this time, I'd like to go through the agreed statement of facts. So these are the facts that the parties have agreement on. There's no question of their validity. And I think that the timeline in this case is very important. So I'm going to start, I'm in exhibit two now, at the top of the chronology section. I think it's been established who the parties are here. The property, sorry, paragraph four does note the square footage of the building. That's not in dispute. And then, in terms of chronology, paragraph five, "The Hamilton Wentworth District School Board previously owned and operated a public school on the property. It closed the school, and on August 18, 2022, sold the property to the complainant or the applicant. The applicant applied to the city for a building permit for extensive interior renovations to the building to open its private school." And I'm going to debate whether or not extensive is the right word, but we will come back to that. And on January 24, 2023, building permit number 22147437C3 was issued to the applicant without request for payment of development charges. No DCs were sought or paid when the building permit was issued. Between January 24, 2023, and March 5, 2024, the city did not inform the applicant that DCs were payable. In April 2023, construction had finished, and the applicant was granted an occupancy permit. The applicant began operating a private school on the property. And on September 5, 2023, a building inspector attended the property for a final inspection. That inspection led to the issuance of an order to comply dated September 20, 2023, requiring the submission of an application for a revised permit, because the rear portion of the building that had been labeled as future admin area on the plans filed in support of the January 2023 building permit was now understood to be a small store, and the store is used by parents, teachers, and students only. So on February 5, 2024, the applicant submitted a revised plan. It simply relabeled a section of the, of the plans from admin, future admin to merchant or for the school, the store use. It was a label and change. And there's no question that the store use is a permitted use on the property. And then, paragraph 10, on February 5, 2024, the applicant submitted, sorry, moving on to- Paragraph 11, on March 15, 2024, "Finance advised that under the development charge bylaw, DCs were supposed to be collected before issuance of the original permit, and it provided a calculation of them at $453,943.12. Staff advised this calculation excluded education development charges on the basis that the property is used as a private school. Staff also advised that this calculation did not include any redevelopment credit for the area of the existing building on the basis that, under the DC bylaw, the original use of the building would have been exempt because it was owned and operated by a Board of Education, the Hamilton Wentworth District School Board. The calculation was based on the DC rate enforced on January 24, 2023, when the original building permit was issued to the city. The DCs are associated with the original building permit. Paragraph 15, on June 7, 2024, "A representative of the applicant sent an, a clerk, sent the clerk an email stating, 'I am writing this letter on behalf of One School Global, the not-for-profit private school located at 411 Old Brock Road. We received the city building permit on January 2023 for renovation of the existing school building that we purchased from HWDSB. The school was given occupancy April 2023. We have been operating as normal since that point. In March, we received notice that we owe DCs to the tune of $456,000. Obviously, this is ridiculous and was a massive shock to the operating team. Although there has been no follow-up or further communication from the city, we have been counseled to formally dispute the charge in the attachment. Our team would look forward to discussing this matter in detail with your office.'" And then, on June 13, 2024, "The applicant's lawyer wrote to the clerk with the complaint under section 20 of the DC Act. The revised building permit has not been issued, and DCs in the amount of $456,000 have not been paid." And I don't think I need to read the balance of the agreed statement of facts. You have those for your review as you see fit. At this point in time, I'd like to supplement these facts by calling my client representative, Mr. Dave Baird, to give oral testimony.
Before we begin, Solicitor Meader, we need the clerk to swear in the witness, please.
Mr. Baird, do you affirm that the evidence to be given to you touching on the matters in question between the parties to this proceeding shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. So you can continue, please, Solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mr. Baird.
Good morning.
First question I have for you is, what is your relationship to One School Global?
I have two kids that are going to One School at this time. They're in grades eight and 10. They both started with One School, obviously a different facility in grade three. I did sit on the board for One School Global for the Hamilton campus for three years. I currently don't have a formal role at school. I was asked to represent the group because of my experience during the construction process.
And to that end, you speak to the construction process. What is your occupation?
I'm a partner at WDI Group. We're a design-build group based here in Anncaster, and look after mostly commercial, industrial-type construction projects.
Okay. And so you do work in construction? Is that what I understand?
That's right.
Okay.
Large portion, large portion of our work would be in Hamilton area.
Okay. And what was your role in this particular renovation project?
We have an in-house design team at WDI Group, and our team took the lead through the design phase of this project. And our pre-construction team looked after all the budgeting, the construction budgeting, the early stages. Through the construction phase, I stepped in as really in a volunteer role to work on the project management team. And all the construction during that time was mostly completed by volunteer labor.
Thank you. Would you please describe the efforts that One School took in securing a property, this property, to carry out its objects?
Yeah, One School, this Hamilton campus really has been, had been actively looking for, for a facility, for a piece of land, or somewhere to operate suitably for about 14 years. It became evident to the group that it was almost impossible to find something that was work, that would work as an approved use. And we couldn't seem to find an advocate at the city who would be able to work on our behalf and support us in that effort. And so we've been aware of these surplus schools. I think we were made aware in 2016, and some of the members were able to tour some of those public schools at that time, which were obviously opening and operating still. But we understood that they were going to be coming up for sale in future years. So it seemed this was really our only opportunity at this point. And so when the opportunity arose, we went into, for, we put our bid in for the Spencer Valley Public School at $6 million. And I think it's worthwhile to share that the next bid down was at 1.2 million. So it was, although we overbid by 4.8 million, our group felt this was a massive milestone, and they were really, they were extremely happy with closing the deal.
Thank you. And can you talk about fundraising that was done for the renovation project?
Yeah, well, in a, you know, fairly small community school, obviously fundraising is always a challenge. We obviously needed to be very structured on how we came up with these budgets for construction project budgets, and then how we manage those budgets moving forward through the construction process. Our, our actual project renovation budget was around 1.7, I think it was slightly less, and 1.7 million. And that was with volunteer labor. And we were extremely disciplined in the way we managed that budget, through design, designing to a budget, and then obviously managing those costs as we went through construction. So I think it's also worthwhile sharing, we still have outstanding private loans, is around 2.5 million.
Okay. And if the city had advised that half a million dollars was owing in DCs prior to issuing a building permit, what would One School have done?
I have no doubt in my mind that this would have been a game changer. Obviously, the budget was a stretch for us to start with. And we were, we were doing everything we could to bring in value at that point at close to 1.7 million. I think that very likely, it would have been really up to us at that point, since we were responsible to write the scope that would fit that budget, we would have written a scope that was far more straightforward. It could have been more of a refresh-type project that would, wouldn't have required a building permit, as in paint, flooring, maybe a lighting upgrade, and so on. Wouldn't require permitting, I think. Does that answer your question?
I think so. Just to be clear, you're saying that had you known of this charge at the time you sought a building permit, you would have forgotten the building permit?
Absolutely, yes.
And so if One School had undertaken the refresh-type work that you were, you just referred to in terms of floor, changing the flooring and painting and cleaning, et cetera, would a building permit have been required for that type of work?
No, no. If we'd been simply, yeah, updating the flooring, doing the painting, like you mentioned, and just doing a general refresh, that was our original consideration. Of course, we looked at that as an option. I mean, the school had been operating as a public school until 20, until, I think it was closed down during COVID, and we could have simply moved in and operated as normal. No permit would have been required.
Thank you. Are you aware of any other nonprofit private schools that have recently purchased surplus school sites?
Yeah, very much so. Glad to speak about this, but we're in regular communication with some of these other groups that bought the other surplus schools right around the same time that these, that Hamilton Wentworth was selling off these parcels and facilities. The other non, the other groups that, including Elizabeth Bagshaw and the Queen's Rangers-
Those are, sorry, what are, what is Elizabeth Bagshaw and the Queen's Rangers?
Those were the public, those were the public schools that were being sold off.
Okay.
So those schools were purchased by other nonprofit private school groups. And both, both of them were purchased around the same time as we purchased Spencer Valley.
Okay. And what do you-
Sorry, Solicitor, can you provide the name of the second school? The first one was Elizabeth Bagshaw. What was the second one?
The Queen's Rangers, I believe it is. I think I have that right.
And do you know who purchased the Queen's Rangers?
Oak Hill Academy.
Okay. And what do you know about these two examples in terms of renovations undertaken and payment of DCs?
I, yeah, we've had, we've had quite a bit of back and forth with these other groups. Elizabeth Bagshaw, it was purchased, like I said, around the same time in 22. They went ahead and got a permit for renovating the interior of the building. They did quite a major overhaul in the interior. And they received the building permit. They completed that project. Their team, the students were able to move in and operate as normal. And they did not pay, you know, and no DCs were requested from the city. Since that time, they've applied for a site plan approval, and they've gone for a building addition, which includes a gym. I believe it's around, you know, it's a large project, probably a $15 million expansion. And they are expecting to pay $70,000 in development charges for that addition, which makes sense. And that's to us. Queen's Rangers has also purchased, was also purchased, as we said, a small group. They've done extensive interior renovations as well. And they also confirmed that no DCs were requested by the city.
Thank you. And can you speak to what the enrollment is for your private school use, and how this compares to the enrollment when it was operated, when the subject site was operated as a public school?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, my son actually attended Spencer Valley School while it was a public school. He was there for a couple of years. And I don't know, I don't know for sure. I thought the student number was around 300 students at that point. It was, it would have been two schools and one, because the- it would have been two schools and one because the Harvest Road School was under renovation at the time when he was there. We currently have 47 students enrolled in the facility.
Thank you. And is there anything else you would like to say to this committee before we conclude your examination?
Yeah, I really, I really would like to just to speak from the point of view of the community in general, just the general sort of sentiment that I've, there's been a ton of eyes and ears that are extremely interested in hearing today, that are, I'm sure they're listening in, and they're really looking forward to hearing how this turns out, but I think it's, I'm trying to think how to say it, you know, I think the group feels that really we've, they've been unfairly treated, they feel the city has, has done a lot to stand in the way of what they've, they've been working to do, and obviously we've got a lot of local groups who've taken an interest in this, in this, in the school, they feel it's a benefit to their children, and a benefit to the families, and, and they're just, you know, looking to move forward, but they've been, it's been a massive, massive challenge going on for years, I think, with some even feeling that it's becoming a charter issue because we've been treated differently than some of the other sites. And I think at the end of the day, you know, the point we'd like to make is, is someone from the city made a decision that DCs were, were not payable when we, when we got the permit for the school, later on, I guess someone decided that they were payable, so we just feel that this is a case where no one really needs to have egg on their face, you know, it's not doing any dis spite to any law or person, someone, someone made a mistake a couple of years ago here, and we're just asking counselors if you can please just see our, see things from this perspective and really let it go. I think another point to be made is, I don't know if it relates directly, but we are on septic, we're on well, we currently have had massive issues with the, with the power being provided to the building, so we're actually off the grid at the moment, running on a generator, so not, not causing too much stress on the, on the city systems, that's for sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baird. Mr. Chair, that concludes my examination.
Just so the members of the committee understand the process, so if you have questions that you'd like to ask Mr. Baird, make sure you have them written down because we will come to you on it. We first give the opportunity to the city solicitor to ask questions of Mr. Baird. Please proceed, Solicitor Engel.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Baird, in terms of the use of the school as a private school, it's the same size as it was, you didn't increase the size of square footage?
No, none of the exterior... None of the exterior walls were touched, so we, it was strictly an interior renovation.
And so it's no bigger or smaller than it used to be?
Correct.
And in terms of the enrollment in the school, you said there's 47 there now, and is that the maximum capacity of the school, or is that just what the enrollment happens to be right now?
The school's designed for around 100 students.
And you'd indicated that it had been occupied by 300 students when it was serving as a double school?
That was my understanding.
Okay, so they were housed in that same school?
Correct.
In terms of, you're not an architect, I take it?
No, I'm not.
And you're not a building code consultant?
I'm not a building code consultant.
Okay, so when you gave your evidence to the committee that no building permit would have been required for what you call that refresh-type work, that's your understanding?
I've, I've worked for many years in construction and many office setups, there's, as far as I've been aware, and many, many years I've been doing it, it's never been a requirement to get a permit for a flooring upgrade or a paint upgrade.
And what about, are you familiar with the concept of a change of use under the building code?
Would there be a change of use if it's remaining a school?
That's the good question, that's, I guess what the experts would know.
Right.
So, thank you. So from your evidence, I understand that the schools contemplated a total budget of 7.7 million, six to acquire the property, and 1.7 to do the renovations?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, and I think you indicated that the school might well have overpaid by four, 4.8 million compared to the other bidder?
Yeah, that was the information we were given after the bid.
And that would obviously have affected the budget?
Yes.
In considering this property, I guess I don't know what your role was for the school in, in the decision whether to purchase the property or put in a bid for the property, were you involved in that component?
I was, I was part of a larger team.
And were you able to share with the committee what due diligence was done at that time by, on behalf of the school? What I mean is, sorry, I didn't interrupt you, due diligence in terms of this issue, like the, what, working up your project costs and saying, okay, I'm going to buy this thing, I'm going to renovate it, I got to work up my budgets, what are the costs going to be, what are the transaction fee, land transfer tax, development charges, all those pieces, were you involved in that process?
Yes, I was involved in that process, we were also involved, I was also involved in some meetings with the city. I don't have the names, I tip my tongue right now, I could, I could pull them up, but we had, we definitely had some meetings with the city, which included the, the allowed use to have this, we're going to call it a glorified tuck shop in the, in the back wing of the school, which Jennifer spoke to a little earlier, and during that conversation, they confirmed that our, that it would be allowed use, and that, that the revision to the tuck shop area would also be allowed, and it, and we spoke about additional fees that may be required, and they weren't aware of any.
So you're saying that you asked city officials before purchasing the property whether the building permit that you would be seeking for your renovations would trigger a need for DCs?
I don't know if we asked that question specifically.
You could have asked that question, you're an experienced building developer?
Yeah, we are experienced building developer, but never in all our years in construction, I mean, we've, our business has been around since 1976, we ever paid DCs on interior renovation, that's never seen it happen, we've only ever seen it applied to building extensions or, or new build construction.
And have you ever worked on a property, interior renovation of a property that was previously used for, what is a DC exempt use?
Sorry, I didn't get your question.
The, public schools are under the bylaw a DC exempt use, and so there's a credit mechanism in the bylaw.
Right.
And so if you're doing interior renovation on an office building that paid DCs when it was built, and you do the renovation, it does require a building permit, which triggers a DC review, but then, well, that office building already paid DCs, or would pay DCs under the bylaw historically, and therefore, there's a credit for the full area that you're working on. That's my understanding of how the bylaw works. The exception to that is, if that prior use had never been required, or would not be required under the bylaw because it's an exempt use, then it wouldn't, there wouldn't be a credit available.
Yeah.
Have you dealt with that situation before?
No, no, we have not dealt with that situation, I think I, if I could just speak a little further on that, I think that, you know, the general feeling from the committee is that they had regular communication with these other groups that were in full understanding that their projects were going ahead, and nothing also had come up on these other very similar situations where they've, they've had a school building that were also doing an interior renovation, and also the city didn't ask them for DCs, so we felt that, you know, we were confident in our decision moving forward, that that wasn't going to apply.
So in terms of a time period, we were, I was taking into questions before you bought the property, and you're saying you had that information from those other schools before you bought the property?
No, that would have been after.
Okay, so just completing when you, before you bought the property, did you take time to read the DC bylaw before you bought the property to see whether it would apply or not?
No, we didn't, we were under the assumption it didn't apply, so we didn't dig any deeper.
Okay, and did you get any advice from somebody who's familiar with those bylaws to see whether it would apply or not?
We had lawyers involved.
Okay, and so the lawyers would have been in a position to tell you what the bylaw provided?
I suppose.
Okay, and I'm not going to ask you for what your legal advice was, but if they got it right, or if they got it wrong, that's something you can take up with your lawyer.
Okay.
And in preparing the building permit application, same questions, did you, did you review the bylaw prior to submitting that building permit application?
Our architect, I'm sure, would have done his due diligence in submitting for the permit.
But you're not aware of that he did or didn't?
I'm not aware, no.
Okay, but that's, that's who would have been responsible for doing that if it was, if it was in fact done?
Correct.
Okay, and again, in terms of seeking advice from someone other than the architect, that was something, are you aware that that was done in terms of getting legal advice as to whether the bylaw would require charges or not?
Yeah, I mean, I just would like you to see things from our perspective a little bit, this is something we do every day, I mean, we're constantly getting, we get building permits on a very regular basis, we're working with architects on a very regular basis, I've never known us to, to have to ask the question, do we have to pay DCs, usually the, you know, it's, in our, in my, in my experience, it's, it's being obvious if it's a requirement or not, and if it's not, the city will soon get you straight on that.
And so the, the school was relying on you for advice on that question?
That would have been, that would have been, you know, they would have been partially leaning on our group.
Okay, and in terms of the period before submitting the building permit application, did you ask the city about whether DCs would be payable for what you were proposing to do?
Didn't specifically ask that question.
Now, have you seen any of the documents in respect of the other two schools that you've referred to?
I have not seen, I have not seen documentation, but I've been verbally told, and I trust the reports.
Okay, so...
I could get, I could most likely get access to those documents if needed.
Thank you, sir, I've got no further questions.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baird, if you'd just stay in the chair and remember that you are still under oath, we do have some members of the committee, Counselor Alex Wilson to begin, please.
Thank you, it's just a quick, like, information clarification, I think, I think in, earlier you said someone in building in the permitting process decided we didn't qualify, and then later someone decided we did, was that to say it felt like you had, you didn't qualify because you didn't get a notice, it was the absence of a notice who assumes you didn't qualify, and then you got a notice, now felt there, or did you actually receive something that said, no, no, you're fine, these won't apply, I think it's come out through the conversation, just really, it was a feeling that someone had kind of decided you didn't qualify, and then arbitrarily it felt like you did, or was there kind of a letter or a notice, just trying to unpack that, I think I understood what you meant, and that's, it's fine to have a feeling, by all means, I'm just trying to understand the facts.
Yeah, I think, sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
I was just, I think the point I'm trying to make is that, from what I understand, the permit, once they have the information, they circulate it to all the different departments, the different departments make, either it's a go or a no-go, and finance must have passed on it, and later on, another contact, I'm assuming, must have decided, actually, this does apply, so that's, that's the point I was trying to make, hopefully that makes sense, Alex.
No, thank you, that does make sense.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson, is there any other members of the committee that have questions, please, please indicate. Seeing none, Ms. Mitter, do you have any further questions of your witness?
I do not, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and Mr. Engel, do you have any further questions of this witness?
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you, so the witness is excused, where are we now? To Mr. Engel, do you have anything in reply of...
Sorry, Mr. Chair, if I may, I think at this point in time, I'd like to continue with my submissions and provide my arguments based on the evidence, you now have the, I think, a fulsome evidence or record, and based on that, and our discussions at the outset, I think it's appropriate for the complainant, myself, to make submissions first, and for Mr. Engel to respond.
Okay, so to clarify what you're doing, are you adding additional evidence, or are you simply now providing your final submission?
I'm prepared to move into my submissions.
I understand that, but our normal process would be that Mr. Engel would have an opportunity to reply to any new evidence that was presented by the witness.
Thank you, sir, and no, I don't intend to call any witnesses, thank you for that opportunity.
Therefore, now, Solicitor Mitter, you can proceed with your final submission.
Thank you, sir. So again, referring to the written version of my submissions, there are three bases for why we say there has been an error in the application of the city's bylaw, and why DCs are not owing. Those three reasons are, number one, DCs cannot be retroactively imposed, number two, the school use does not constitute development, as that term is defined in the bylaw, and collection of DCs in this case does not accord with the purpose and intent of the DC bylaw, and number three, the city is applying its DC bylaw inconsistently and unfairly. So in terms of that first basis, DCs cannot be imposed retroactively. Pursuant to subsection 26, subsection 1 of the Development Charges Act, DCs are payable upon building permit issuance, and that section of the act is found at tab 6 of the document book, page 134. The building permit, as you've heard, was issued in January of 2023, and if payment of DCs was required, the city was required to inform my client at that time. Instead, there was no mention of DCs until more than a year later in March of 2024. The Divisional Court was unequivocal in Waterloo and Greary Investment Limited, which is found at tab 8 of your document book, at paragraph 36, the Divisional Court states, "The building permit for the development was issued on August 12, 2016. Pursuant to the DC bylaw and applicable development charge..." Sorry, pursuant to the DC bylaw, the applicable development charge was payable at the time of issuance of the building permit. The determination of the applicable rate of the development charge was required to be carried out at that time, at building permit issuance. Moving to paragraph 42, "The determination of entitlement to the discounted industrial rate is made by the decision-maker, the region..." rate is made by the decision-maker, the region, or in its shoes, the LPAT, at the time of issuance of the building permit and before the building is occupied." And as we've noted, occupancy happened in April of 2023, it was a year later that the city suggested that in their view, DCs and the amount of half a million dollar, million dollars was owing. And therefore, in my submission, the city missed its opportunity to impose DCs. If it wanted to impose DCs or felt that it had a right to impose DCs, it had to do so prior to issuance of building permit. The former Ontario Municipal Board, which is the predecessor to the Ontario Land Tribunal and who would hear any appeals of DC complaints, found on at least two occasions that the, that the DC Act is a taxing statute. And in the document book at, at tab 9, you'll find the Carrier Mausoleums Construction in Niagara case, where the OMB says at paragraphs 19 and 20, "The law with respect to whether a development charge is a tax is well settled. The Interior Cancer Treatment and Research Foundation and Ottawa City decision, the majority held that while not every charge or levy imposed by the province was a tax, development charges imposed under part 1 of the Development Charges Act were a tax. As for interpreting statutes levying taxes, Canadian authorities are equally clear. In short, a law imposing taxation should be strictly construed against a taxing authority." As stated by Justice Esty and Morguard Properties in Winnipeg, at paragraph 22, "For centuries, statutes levying taxes and like imposts on the citizens have been read strictly in the sense that the legislature must, in order to reduce a right in the taxpayer, say so in unmistakably clear terms." And at paragraph 26, he commented, "In more modern terminology, the courts require that in order to adversely affect a citizen's right, whether as a taxpayer or otherwise, the legislature must do so expressly. Truncation of such rights may be legislatively unintended or even accidental, but the courts must look for express language in the statutes before concluding that these rights have been reduced." And then in the Glenn Coe case found at tab 10, page 166 of the document book, the tribunal states that the board finds, in this case, that the Development Charges Act is a taxing statute and must be interpreted in a literal and strict manner. In this case, any doubt as to the application of the statute to the applicant's lands must be resolved in favor of the applicant. Understanding, based on the cases that we've just reviewed, that DCs are in fact a tax, I would like to review at a higher level some of the more general principles of taxing law, and specifically, specifically the limitations on the ability to impose taxes retroactively, as enunciated by the courts. So first, the Supreme Court of Canada has given specific consideration to how taxing statutes should be interpreted. Its decision in Imperial Oil in Canada, Inc. Limited in Canada, supports the premise that there is a need to carefully consider the words of the DC Act, so that taxpayers can safely rely on it when conducting business and arranging their tax affairs. And in CAW Building Corp., Local 27, and the Municipal Property Assessment Corp., Region Number 23, at tab 13 of the document book, the Ontario Assessment Review Board states the following at paragraph 26. "The new definition cannot be used to retroactively determine the intended meaning of the previous undefined service organization. The Interpretation Act does not authorize retroactive effect. Taxpayers are entitled to certainty from their legislators." And that includes not only the DC Act, but how it is, it is applied through the city's bylaw. And in Collins and Ackman Products in Canada, the Tax Court of Canada stated at paragraph 28, "Instinctively, it seems that retroactive determinations, like retroactive tax legislation, should be avoided except in cases where the legislature has clearly and unambiguously set out its intent to impose or permit the tax to be imposed retroactively. The DC Act indicates that DCs are payable at building per, permit issuance. It does not include any expressed exception to this rule for imposing it at a later date when we're not talking about a draft plan of subdivision or a consent under section 53. In cases like this, it is at building permit issuance, period. The city did not advise of any DCs at the time of building permit issuance, and my client understood that no DCs were payable with respect to the renovations, and it therefore conducted its business and arranged its tax affairs accordingly. The express language of the DC Act must be carefully considered. It says, 'A development charge is payable for a development upon a building permit being issued. The city cannot retroactively require the payment of DCs once that stage has passed. It is unjust and beyond the authority of the city.' My client does not have the budget to pay a surprise bill of half a million dollars. This puts One Global in an impossible position. If the city erred by not imposing the DCs prior to building permit issuance, it is simply out of luck. It is not appropriate or fair for the city, city to be making its mistake a burden for my client to rectify. It is also a very slippery slope that erodes the certainty that the DC Act and the bylaw are required to ensure. If the city can come back more than a year after it was required to impose DCs to insist that they be paid, where will the arbitrarily, arbitrary, arbitrary line be drawn? Can the city seek to correct this mistake two years later, five years later, after someone new purchases a property? It would be an unprecedented, it would be unprecedented and not in accordance with principles of taxation, which require certainty for the taxpayer and unequivocal authority to retroactively impose taxes. You heard from Mr. Baird that had the city imposed DCs when it was supposed to, prior to building permit issuance, then it would not have proceeded with the renovations at all. If one school was given the opportunity to forego renovations, they would have done so. They would have put a fresh coat of paint on, moved in, and began using the building as is. No building permit would have been required, therefore, there would have been nothing to trigger the payment of DCs in the first place. Section 12 of the bylaw sets out the rules for when a development charge is payable, and it says, "The development of land is subject to a development charge where the development requires the following," and it goes through all the different permissions in the Planning Act, from a zoning bylaw amendment, a minor variance, conveyance of land under section 50 sub 7, the approval of draft plans, consents under section 53, condominium approval, and G, the issuance of a permit under the Building Code. If none of the foregoing permissions were required, including a building permit, no DCs could be imposed. Withdrawal of the permit is a choice my client would have made." You heard that from Mr. Baird. Yet the city is putting my client in a position where they no longer have that choice. That is unjust and unfair. Again, this causes serious prejudice and hardship to my client. The, the city should not be willfully and intentionally creating these consequences, especially when a not-for-profit school is the, at the receiving end. Additionally, subsection 20 sub 2 of the DC Act provides that a complaint may not be made later than 90 days after the day the DC is payable. Given that subsection 6 sub 1 of the DC Act provides that the date the DCs are payable is the date of building permit issuance, this would mean that our client's 90 days within which to make a complaint expired even before our client was advised of the DCs the city says are owing. Clearly, the DC Act does not contemplate the application of DCs after building permit issuance. As noted in our complaint letter, we filed the complaint out of an abundance of caution in order to preserve our client's rights and avoid having this charge put on the, the tax roll without any opportunity to, to, to oppose that. Moving to basis, base number two, "The school use does not constitute development, as that term is defined in the bylaw, and collection of DCs in this case does not accord with the purpose and intent of the DC bylaw." So this is very important, the city's DC bylaw defines development, and that definition is found at tab 4, page 14 of the document book. And that definition states that "development means the construction, erection, or placing of one or more buildings or structures on land, or the making of an addition or alteration to a building or structure that has the effect of increasing the size or usability thereof, or any development requiring any of the actions described in section 12, and includes redevelopment." The renovation of the school to repartition classrooms, down some walls, and do some other minor adjustments does not meet this definition of development. The alterations do not have the effect of increasing the size or usability of the school. Repartitioning the space does not increase the usability of the school. It was a school before, it is a school now, moving walls does not increase that usability. In fact, the enrollment for the private school will be significantly less than the enrollment when it was used as a public school, so it'll be used less intensely than it was previously. Section 12 of the bylaw only triggers DCs when development is occurring. We just went through section 12, and I'll just quickly repeat it again. Section 12 of the bylaw says that "the development of land is subject to a development charge where the development," capital D, referring to the definition, "requires the following." So that section only triggers the payment of DCs when development, capital D, is occurring. In this case, the building permit does not result in development, it's not increasing the usability of the building. Furthermore, section 10 of the bylaw states, "All development of land within the area to which this bylaw applies will increase the need for service, class of services," again, capitalized D, "development" in section 10. Again, the renovation does not constitute development, and it certainly does not increase the need for services. The property will continue to function on private water and sanitary, and in terms of transportation, there will be no increase in the need for road capacity from what is already reserved in the system for the pre-existing school, which was built in the 1960s. And the same can be said for all soft services. In fact, it is expected that the private school will have a lower burden on the existing services in the reserve because of the existing school than the public school itself did. An interpretation of the bylaw on its face confirms that the renovation to the school building does not constitute development, as that term is defined in the bylaw. Therefore, no DCs are owing. Moving to the third and final basis for the complaint, "The city is applying its DC bylaw inconsistently and unfairly." The committee heard from Mr. Baird, and, and there's no contrary evidence, that there are two similar examples of private schools purchasing surplus school sites from the school board. In both examples, renovations were made to the building, which were more substantial or similar to the nature of the renovations in this case. In both of those cases, DCs were not imposed. According to the principles of taxation, the taxpayer is entitled to certainty as to how the taxing legislation, in this case, the DC bylaw, will be applied. If the city is applying the bylaw inconsistently among identical scenarios, there is no certainty and a complete lack of fairness. One school is entitled to be treated the same as the other not-for-profit schools that have made renovations under the 2019 bylaw. Accordingly, again, for this third reason, no DCs should be owing. Now, I just, based on Mr. Engel's cross-examination of Mr. Baird, it seems there may be a suggestion that one school should have known that it had to pay DCs, and in my submission, that is not at all relevant to the, the reasons before you today. The city is trying by, by making that, that assertion, is trying to turn its own mistake back on my client, and that's not fair or appropriate. The city should have known, it's the city who should have known at the time of building permit issuance, not my client, if DCs were payable. That is not my client's responsibility to point out to the city that DCs may or may not be owing at the time of building permit issuance. So in conclusion, again, the city is not permitted to impose DCs retroactively, the DC Act is clear that DCs are to be paid prior to building permit issuance. Absent an express exception to this rule, the city has no authority to seek DCs more than a year after they were due. Taxpayers are entitled to certainty, and the city needs to deal with the consequences of its own mistake and/or change in interpretation. It's not one school's problem to solve. A clear reading of the bylaw leads to the conclusion that the renovations do not constitute development, as that term is defined, the renovations do not increase the usability of the building whatsoever. And again, given the fact that other schools in a very similar situation have not been charged DCs, there is a lack of fairness that needs to be addressed by treating my client the same in these circumstances. So again, we are asking that the committee finds that DCs are not owing in this case for all the foregoing reasons, and subject to any questions you may have, those concludes my submissions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor Meehan, we're just waiting for, yes, we can? Okay, so the final submission from Counselor Meehan has been, has been provided to us. Does any of the committee members have any questions of Counselor Meehan? Counselor Taddeeson, please.
I just have one question in, in regards to the building permit that was issued. Were the renovations that were conducted, were they consistent with what was required in the building permit? Or was there a difference, or did things change halfway through?
Thank you, Counselor Meehan.
Yes, so as set out in the agreed statement of facts, the, there was one wing of the building, and I don't have, I don't have the plans with me to provide to you, there was one wing of the building that was delineated on the original plans as being for future administration. Through the building permit process, it was built with a permitted use, being a, to use Mr. Baird's words, a tuck shop that was operating only for those parents and students affiliated with the school. And so the, the building inspector requested that the plans be, and that was a permitted use, that was confirmed to be a permitted use, so the plans were simply modified to acknowledge that that was what was, had been constructed there instead of future admin in the original plans. So that was the extent of the changes.
Labeling.
A labeling, it was a labeling change in the plans.
Supplemental, Counselor Taddeeson.
Okay, and, and thank you for that, and I'm aware, like, you know, being from the education field, tuck shops are in various schools in the public board as well, so at the time, was anything said about, like, when those changes were made? Was anything said that that may change the DC requirements, or?
Thank you, Counselor Meehan, please.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, I believe it was, so the changes were made, I'm just going to refer to the agreed statement of facts, I think the changes were made, the, the revised plans with the labeling change were, were provided in February, and as part of that, and I guess those revised plans were circulated, and at that time, it was a month later that finance took the position for the first time that a half a million was owing in DCs.
Counselor Taddeeson.
So do you think that that had any play in the fact that DCs were now being requested because you made a tuck shop?
I do not.
Okay.
I believe, I think it's, it's quite clear that they, they're taking the position that the DCs were payable at, when they, they were taking the position at that time in March, that DCs should have been paid prior to building permit issuance in January of 2023, and that they either made a mistake or there was a change in interpretation. That's not clear to us how this, this came about.
Counselor, any follow-up?
I guess I, I guess what I'm just kind of trying to find out is, if builders do make changes, does the city have a right to impose DCs after the fact if the changes aren't in line with the original DCs, the, the original building permit? That's my only question, I guess. Thank you.
Counselor Meehan, response?
Through you, Mr. Chair, no, this was not a new application, it was simply a labeling error, it was under the original building permit application, and the city is, is not taking the position that it was that change in labeling that triggered the DCs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, the next member of the committee will be Counselor Alex Wilson, please.
Thank you, I have, through you, Chair, two questions on definitions, but just a, a quick third question, just to maybe pick up where Counselor Taddeeson left off. What was the rationale for the, the resubmission or the labeling change, understanding a minor change? What prompted that, or that, what was the motivation or proceeding incident, like, why? Like, why?
Counselor Meader?
My understanding is that there was an inspection done by the city of the property, and the use did not match what was on the plans. So it was just a matter of getting the consistency with the building permit.
Counselor?
Thank you. Through you, Chair. I understand the arguments being made as to why not being seen as an intensification of the site or a change in the square footage. I understand those are the arguments being put forward, and that's why development doesn't apply. The development bylaw also defines redevelopment as, like, as a subset of development. Are you able to put forward any arguments worth considering as to why redevelopment? I'm assuming you would say this is also not redevelopment, if you're saying it's not development, so just wondering, why is this not redevelopment?
Counselor Meader? Take your time, just find the section you want.
So even if, so first of all, the definition of redevelopment means the construction, erection, or placing of one or more buildings on land, where all or part of the building has previously been demolished, or changing the use of a building from a residential to a non-residential, or from a non-residential to a residential, or changing a building from one form of residential to another form of residential, or from one non-res to another non-res use, and including any development or redevelopment requiring any of the actions described in Section 12. So I would, my first position would be that it doesn't meet that definition. We're not changing the use, we're not going from non-res to res, we're not increasing the density in a residential building, or, and we're not going from one non-residential use to another. It's a school, it's a permitted use on site under the bylaw. And again, even if it were to meet the definition of redevelopment, it still is limited or scoped by the foregoing portion of that definition, which says it has to be increasing the size or usability.
Counselor, follow-up?
No follow-up, and I think this might be an obvious answer, but just to get it out, and you would state and argue, and it doesn't seem that the other, like, the city has said otherwise, and you've kind of been answering, have said, you don't think it's because of the tuck shop, but you would say that you don't think the tuck shop classifies as an intensification of the site either, or a new use?
No, 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 through you, Mr. Chair, it does not. It's a permitted use, and it's part of the use of the site as a school at a lower intensity than it was as a private, a public school.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Any further questions from members of the committee?
So, you know, Counselor Wilson, if you could take the chair for me, I just have a couple of questions. So if I can ask clarification on the agreed statement of fact through to Counselor Meader, earlier on, on Item 6, you indicated that you objected to the term extensive interior renovations. You don't agree with the term extensive.
Well, I guess it's a relative term. Extensive, and I apologize for the oversight in not discussing that verbiage with Mr. Engel prior to today. But yeah, I think that's a relative term, and again, all the renovations are interior, and removal of some walls, repartitioning walls, in my opinion, is not extensive.
Thank you. Chair, if I may inquire then, the remaining sections of the agreed statement of facts, you have no issue with, other than Item 6?
Other than the use of the word extensive in Item 6.
Thank you. So I just want to ask that for the record. Can I get clarification in terms of your interpretation, if I may, Chair? When development charges on an exempt classification, a school, a church, things along that line, when they are now being developed by a different institution, that DC becomes a credit to the new owner of the property? What are your comments with regards to how that would apply to this property?
If this, if the renovations constituted development, in which, again, we say it does not, and if my client was willing to proceed with those renovations had they known the DCs were payable, then they would have been subject, they could have been subject to DCs. If they were, if the renovations did constitute development, and, if they did constitute development and were imposed at the time, and my client chose to proceed with the permit anyways, which they, you've heard they wouldn't. In that case, then yes, DCs would be payable, because you don't get a credit for prior uses that were exempt from payment of DCs. But that's not the case here. We're not suggesting that we're exempt from the payment of DCs by virtue of the school, the school use. It's really the matter of retroactive payment, the fact that this does not constitute development according to the bylaw, and the inconsistent application of the bylaw.
Thank you for that, Chair. I have a follow-up question, if I may. Can we get clarification with reference to the tuck shop? So was the tuck shop inside the pre-existing building, or did the, did one school construct an additional room in which the tuck shop would operate?
My apologies, Mr. Chair. Could you please repeat the question?
Absolutely. So you indicated, and Mr. Baird indicated, that there would be a tuck shop. I'm trying to clarify, was the tuck shop arranged within the school property as it existed when you purchased the building, or did you build an additional room to which the tuck shop would operate within?
I don't know if it's out of order for Mr. Baird to answer that question. I don't have the, I don't have the answer.
It's up to the chair, not up to me.
Yeah, I think if you, if we have the information in the room, if there's not an objection, we're good to proceed with that.
You're still under oath.
Yeah, I can answer the question. The original application, there was two areas shown on the drawings as food storage in the admin room, in the admin area. I think the admin, the future admin was really a mislabeling. It should have been, should have been labeled differently. The food storage rooms are, remain. So those were new rooms that were, were built in an open area to create this tuck shop.
So the original, when you purchased it, was there a tuck shop in the building?
There was, in a different location.
So to clarify, if I may, Chair, thank you. There was a new room built, constructed, attached to the building, so it's not a standalone building, it's attached to the building that exists, and that new room eventually became the tuck shop.
Sorry, if I may clarify, so within the existing building footprint, a, an area within the existing building was, some racks were constructed, and that was labeled the tuck shop. I understand from Mr. Baird that when they purchased the property from the public school board, there was a tuck shop in the building, however, in a different location. So it's a re, again, just a re-allocation of the space to different uses, but the same uses in different, in different locations within the existing building footprint.
So it's your submission that the tuck shop was not a new construction of a room attached to the school? It's all within the original school?
Correct.
As it was built?
That's correct.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Chair, time to you?
Thank you. So I'll now assume the chair, seeing if there are any further questions from the committee. I see none. So, Mr. Engel, if you could please proceed with your final submission.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to start with where I'd started before, which is...
Mr. Engel, before you proceed, thank you. Go ahead. Just wanted to make sure the other microphone was off.
Okay, thank you. Where I started before, which is what this complaint procedure is about and what the committee's jurisdiction is, and I wanted to extend that, and well, maybe I should just take us back to Tab 16.
Tab 16 in the original book?
In the, yes, which is page 277, which I took you to before.
Thank you.
Which this committee has jurisdiction to deal with three things: an incorrect calculation, whether credit is available or was incorrectly calculated, or there was an error in the application of the bylaw. And if I can take that a step further, what that means is that this is not a forum for granting of exemptions, partial exemptions, the plea to sympathy may have a place at the city. I'm not suggesting the city is heartless. I'm suggesting that this committee, in dealing with this complaint, is not the venue for those kind of submissions. And importantly, what that's indicating is this is not a forum, as I'd said before, for minor variances to a bylaw, to give exceptions or partial considerations for things. That's not something this committee can do. It's there to see if the bylaw was improperly applied, as per the terms of the bylaw. What I wanted to add to that was that that's also something that, if this committee can't do it, and this committee under the Act is counsel, you're standing in the shoes of counsel. So if a counsel, the same counsel that passes the DC bylaw on a complaint can't be tweaking its bylaw, it has to apply the bylaw that has been adopted. Staff certainly can't either. Staff do their best to administer these bylaws, follow the processes that they have, and that can lead to mistakes in one of two directions. One is they failed to call for something the bylaw called for, or they asked for something that the bylaw didn't call for. This complaint mechanism can deal with the latter, and my friend's suggestion is, if staff make an error in the other direction, there's absolutely no way to ever recover from it, and that de facto, an oversight or mistake by staff, misinterpretation by somebody, grants an exemption, grants an ad hoc exemption to someone, because you had your one chance, building permit issuance, you're done. It can never be recouped. That's the effect of her submissions, and I'll take you through it as to why I think that's not the way the Act is structured. So the other piece of context I wanted to give was, there's been a bit of interweaving here of different contexts. So you've heard about permitted uses, that's a planning concept under the zoning bylaw. There's the building permit context, as to what requires a building permit and what triggers a revision to plans and the building inspector's enforcement of that. And then there's the development charge context. They all are related, but they all have their distinct components. And so just to address the tuck shop question, the, in my submission, the only significance of that for this committee, which is, I think, I'm in agreement with my friends, is because of what happened there as a building permit matter, and I think the inspector felt it was important under the code to identify different uses, because they have different fire things, that's not a permitted use thing under zoning, and it's not a DC question. What happened was, because of that revision to the application, the city's normal process of, we've got an application and send it to Finance, what's our position, does that trigger anything on a DC front, it caught the previous error. That's really the significance of that event, is that it came to staff's attention that there had been the previous determination or oversight, whatever it was, wasn't right, that DCs should have been paid on the original building permit at that time, they should have been asked for. And that is why what's in front of you is a DC calculation as of the date of the original building permit under the bylaw that applied at that time. That's the city's position, that that's what's appropriate. So it's not tied to a later change or a tuck shop issue. So I just wanted to clarify that. If I could just take you through a couple of things on the agreed facts, so we can clarify a bit, and the committee did, to take my friend back to Paragraph 6 about the extensive interior renovations. This was an agreed statement of facts, and so, you know, we finalized it last night, so I recognize we all make mistakes sometimes, but I was a bit surprised to hear that that was no longer agreed. But let me take you to my friend's submissions today. In Paragraph 3, the renovations included gutting the interior. So if that's not an extensive interior renovation, I don't know what is. And let me give you some more context. With the benefit of volunteer labor, this interior gutting project was $1.7 million. To me, again, that is extensive interior renovations. So I'm not sure why my friend wanted to walk from that, but I'll take you from, take you to what I suspect that's about in a moment. And my friend also didn't take you to Page 3 of the agreed statement of facts, areas of agreement and issues. So we've agreed on which bylaw applies. You have both of them, the older one and the current one, but it's the older one that is, we've agreed applies. And then she said, you're free to read Paragraph 20, and I'm going to read it to you. The applicant takes issue with the city seeking DCs now, given that it did not ask for them in January 23, 23, at the time the original building permit was issued, and that is indeed what, one of the issues she's raised. The other was the applicability of the DC to the applicant on the basis that it is a Board of Education under the bylaw. And that agreement of what the issues were was completed yesterday, and so you will see in the materials, there's portions of the Education Act and so on. You've heard different arguments today, which I will address, but those different, these arguments come from the complaint letter, which my friend provided, and that's, you'll see that at Tab 3, and on Page 7, it sets out, basically sets out what those two requirements are. And I'm not going to take you through all of them, all of the wording of it, but the distillation of it is what shows up in Paragraph 20. So Board of Education and retroactive requirement of the payment. So that's what we had, had been put forward in the complaint, and you'll see at the end of Paragraph 2 on Page 7, the city cannot retroactively require the payment of DCs, that's the summary conclusion, and then the last, second last paragraph on the page, in any event, the ongoing use of the property constitutes a Board of Education. So that's what the complaint was. That was as of last night, what the agreement as to the issues were, and while one of those has been maintained, and I'll address it, I think my friend has not pursued the Board of Education piece, and that's for good reason, because Board of Education under the bylaw is a defined term, and you'll find that... Find that on Page 12, definition N, and it refers to a board as defined in the Education Act.
Good question. I'm sorry.
Page 12 of Document 1, it is definitions in the DC bylaw, and it defines Board of Education, means a board as defined in Clause 1 Sub 1 of the Education Act. And the Education Act excerpts I've included are in Tab 7, and you'll see in 1 Sub 1 on Page 136 of the document book, Board means a district school board or a school authority. It's quite a complicated act, the Education Act, but you'll see District School Board is also defined on that page, and it lists the English language public, the English language separate, the French language public, and the French language separate. separate, the French language public, and the French language separate. Those are not the private school that is in the agreed facts. And if it were, in fact, a board of education, it would be imposing property taxes, it would have the authority to impose education development charges, and it would have elections of school board trustees. So it's a private school under the Education Act, it's not a board of education. So it's not exempt. And I think you heard my friend say that they were not, in the discussion about the tuck shop, they were not maintaining that the school, the private school is exempt from the bylaw. And that's an important statement for my friend and one that I agree with. So let's go to the issues as they have evolved. And on the question of unfairness about other schools and an inconsistent application, my submission, Mr. Baird has heard something. You don't have enough information, reliable information, to know what that is. Again, this is an issue that has emerged very recently, and staff have not had the opportunity to do an investigation. Like the response from the police officer, you know, I say, other people were speeding as well. That doesn't get you that far if you were speeding. If the bylaw says that a DC is payable, if those other schools did not, were not asked for them because of some oversight by staff, then that should certainly be looked into, and it might result in them being asked to pay DCs. But that is not, again, a reason for this committee with its jurisdiction to grant this complaint. Final point about your jurisdiction, the complaints, I forgot to add before. If you dismiss a complaint, there is an appeal right to the Ontario Land Tribunal, where it will stand in your shoes and reconsider the issue. If you grant the complaint, there is no further appeal. So that would leave the city with your decision. I'd also caution that your decision in terms of its application by the city going forward, if you made a determination, and my friend is not asking you to, but for example, private schools are not covered by our bylaw, that could have ramifications for the city's application of its bylaw going forward. So let me get back to my friend's three arguments. So the inconsistent unfair application is related to the two other schools. You don't have reliable information as to what happened there and why that happened. And it is something that the city might well want to look into, but it isn't determinative of what you deal with, how you deal with this complaint. DCs cannot be retroactively imposed. If I can ask you to turn to the Act, which is found, excerpts of the development charges Act are pounded, tab six. And page 135, you will see section 32. My submission, that's a complete answer to this question of it wasn't collected at the time of building permit, and therefore it's forever foreclosed from seeking it. It clearly contemplates that there will be circumstances where a development charge or part of it remains unpaid after it is payable, then the amount unpaid, including interest, shall be added to the tax roll, shall be added to the tax roll, and shall be collected in the same manner as taxes. The structure of the Act is not a gotcha, that if a staff member missed something, it's forever lost. The staff member is not imposing the development charges. It is the bylaw that imposes the charges on the happening of certain events. And so if you want to know when the charge is payable, previous page under the Act addresses that on page 134, section 26. A development charge is payable upon a building permit being issued for the development. So if the development charge that's payable as of that date remains unpaid, then it shall be added to the tax roll and shall be collected. So that clearly contemplates what my friend calls retroactivity. It's not retroactivity. It's that you're not suddenly excused from any responsibility for your development charges simply because it wasn't properly required by staff at the time of that building permit. So on the question of retroactive imposition, and I will take you into the cases somewhat because I think I have to, they aren't relevant to what you're dealing with here. The question of legislating, making, passing a regulation or passing an act that has retroactive effect, or making a determination under an act, as in one of the cases, that has retroactive effect, is something that there's lots of law about. But there's no legislation here that's retroactive. The bylaw was in force, it was knowable and readable by the public, that's why you have them. People can arrange their affairs in accordance with the bylaw. They don't get to blindly just rely on, well, let's see what the city says. They can know when they're offering to buy a property and have plans for it, what their budget should look like, they can make provision for it, they can get advice on it, they can read the bylaw. That's when the bylaw, that's what's imposed this, is the bylaw. And so, yes, the city's position is staff should have asked for the DCs when that original building permit was issued, and it failed to do that, but that's not a permanent loss of the ability to ask for it afterwards. So, and it's not a retroactive imposition by legislation. So if I could take you just to the tab eight, which is the Waterloo decision my friend The issue in that case related to a variety of potential uses for the property in question. And some of those uses might attract DCs at a certain rate and others at another. And so the question was, what's the appropriate DC to be applied? And paragraph 36 on page 152 that my friend took you to is pointing to the fact that that determination has to be made as of the day of building permit issuance. So the speculation that it might end up as a different use or a spectrum of uses was what they were grappling with. That's not relevant to the, to this issue. There's no uncertainty as to what the use was that was proposed. And the determination of the applicable rate and the amount is carried out as of that date. That's what, that's the 455,000 has been done in accordance with what this case says, albeit it was done after the issuance of the building permit and not before. There's, my friend, tab nine, took you to the Carrier Mausoleum's construction decision. Sorry, I have to open up my notes here. And that decision from the vice chair of the Ontario Municipal Board does refer to the strict construction proposition and cites Supreme Court of Canada from 1983 as for statutes for interpreting statutes levying taxes, authorities are equally clear. In short, a law imposing taxation should be strictly construed against the taxing authority. And I agree with my friend that a DC is a form of tax. Constitutionally, it's an indirect tax that the province, and hence the city, is still allowed to impose because it is a very tailored, specific one, but it is, it is a form of tax. However, I don't agree with my friend that that decision is accurate, that there is no strict construction principle of interpretation anymore. And to show you that, I'll take you to one of my friend's cases, which is Imperial Oil. And this is fairly well-known court, it's the Supreme Court of Canada. And it says on page 214, paragraph 24, that there's a considerable body of case law on the interpretation of tax statutes that the judge doesn't intend to fully review, but focuses on key principles. And paragraph 25 is what I really wanted to highlight. The jurisprudence of this court is granted in the modern approach to statutory interpretation, and that is, there is only one. Since Stubart, 1984, the Supreme Court of Canada, the court has held that the strict approach to interpretation of statutes is no longer applicable, and that the modern approach should also apply to such statutes. And the modern approach is the words of an act are to be read in their entire context and in their grammatical and ordinary sense harmoniously with the scheme of the act. So all the strict construction decisions that my friend referred to are simply wrong, that the Supreme Court of Canada has made it clear that for taxing statutes, it's the same exercise. So you read them with the words used. So on CAW Building Corp. decision on page, tab 13, page 241, paragraph 26, this is highlighted by my friend, that this new definition cannot be used to retroactively determine the intended meaning of previously undefined service organization. So what had happened was that there was a new regulation, and this is what I was referring to earlier about retroactive legislative steps by regulation or by statutory amendment. That's not what happened here. The bylaw is the same. It's the application and proper reading of it that is at issue. So again, that does not help my friend. On the Hawkhold case on tab 14, page 249. This, my friend points to it saying, of course, the retroactivity must be clearly expressed or necessarily implied. And retroactive taxing statutes can be valid, but it has to be clearly done. Again, not relevant, this, the bylaw was there, it's not changed. This is not retroactive legislation or regulation. Collins and Atkins Aikman, this is fun if we really want to get into it, but on page 256 is the sentence my friend relies on. Instinctively, it seems that retroactive determinations, I'm emphasizing that word, like legislation, should be avoided except in cases where the legislature has clearly unambiguously set it out. That, I think my friend is using it as a general statement of determinations. That's not, that's taken out of context. And earlier in that decision, you'll see on the bottom of page 255 and paragraph 25, the minister's decision to proceed with the determinations under 152 sub 1.11 of the Income Tax Act, which I didn't bring with me, you'd be happy to know, has given rise to some uncertainty. This is because there are express restrictions in section 152 upon determinations having a retroactive effect. It's a very specific term of art in the Income Tax Act that applied to a very complicated restructuring situation. And so read in that context, these retroactive determinations by the minister under that act, where there were express provisions as to when you can do it retroactively or not, again, tells you that has no application here. And so I wouldn't take that as some general principle of a determination by staff about what DCs are payable upon issuance of a building permit. And I don't think I need to take you to the Court of Appeal decision in tab 17, but it stands for the same proposition, which is there's no strict construction taxing statutes, but if you're looking to fall within an exception, they take a hard look at it. That's basically what that decision stands for. So in my submission, those are the reasons why the DC is not being imposed retroactively, it's being asked for after it should have been. It's the bylaw that imposed it upon the happening of certain events. So the final argument that my friend has put forward, which again, my submission is new, is this argument that what they did did not constitute development under the Act. And that is within your jurisdiction to determine, and I would urge you not to make that finding because it would have significant impact on the administration of this bylaw going forward. So if I can ask you to turn to page 14, which is in tab four, that's development, is the definition of development is found there. And it's a, it's a disjunctive definition, construction or erection or placement of buildings that has the effect of increasing the size or usability thereof. Sorry, the, that's the addition or alteration that has that effect. Or any development requiring any of the actions described in section 12, and includes redevelopment. And I think committee members have taken us to some of this before. So development is something that falls within, and requires any of the actions in section 12. So if we go to section 12, which is on page 25, you'll see the familiar list, there's a bunch of Planning Act steps listed. That, that passing of a zoning bylaw counts as development. A minor variance counts as development, but under G, the issuance of a building permit in relation to a building or structure counts as development. So that's built right into the definition. Moreover, on the question of redevelopment, that's on page 19. And again, this comes to the, back to my point about planning context, DC context, and building permit context. In the development charges context, redevelopment, moving from one form of non-residential use to another form of non-residential use, and then includes any development or redevelopment requiring any of the actions in section 12. The significance of that is, in the context of the development charge by law, going from the public school use, which was the first use, which is a defined term in your bylaw, to private school use, is going from one form of non-residential use to another form of non-residential use. And it's significant because of the way your bylaw is structured and has to be structured, that, and you heard some of this from my questioning of Mr. Baird, if I build an office building and I pay DCs on that office building, when somebody comes back with development, which is a building permit to gut the interior of that office building, DCs are triggered. However, DCs are not paid because when you deal with, with a use that under the current bylaw would have paid DCs, so the office conceptually that exists would have paid DCs and most likely did pay DCs, then you get a credit for the area that it has already been built. So if I built 100 square meters and I'm renovating 100 square meters, I trigger the DC, but I get a credit because it's already been paid for the same amount of land. Now, on a conversion, if I can take you to paragraph, page 36. Now, on a conversion, if I can take you to paragraph, page 36 in the bylaw, where an existing building is, sorry, is paragraph, page 36, paragraph 31. Where an existing building is converted in whole or in part from one use, here in aff referred to in this section as the first use, to another use, the amount of the development charges payable shall be reduced by the amount calculated pursuant to this bylaw at the current development charges rate. So you don't get a credit for a 1910, you know, five cent rate, you get a credit for, as if it were, had been paid today, the amount calculated in respect of the first use. The first use shall be the use confirmed through the city's building division and related permit records. And for greater certainty and without limiting the generality of the foregoing, no credit shall be allowed where the converted building or part thereof would have been exempt pursuant to this bylaw. And then no credit can exceed the amount that it previously, or would otherwise have been required for that first use. You don't get a refund. But importantly, you don't get a credit if your converted building is one that would be exempt under the bylaw. And boards of education buildings are exempt under the bylaw. So when you go from, and you redevelop from that use to a private school use, under the framework of the Development Charges Act and of your bylaw, there's no credit available because there's no notional contribution from, by the school boards when they first built that building. It's, it's an exempt use under your current bylaw, under your current rates, so there is no credit available. Had that not been in your bylaw, then it would have been in a situation that Mr. Baird's more familiar with, which is, I've done interior renovation, I don't pay DCs because somebody already paid DCs to build this office. Interior renovation doesn't work any change. That's how the structure of the bylaw works, but it does not work when you have a first use that is an exempt use. And I can take you to the provisions of the bylaw if there's any concern about that, about a board of education not being subject to it, to your bylaw. But that's defined on page 12. And let me find the exemptions, because you have a list of exemptions.
Page 12 in the same act?
Yeah, page 12 of
What section, sorry?
Of your bylaw, that defines board of education. And that takes you to the Education Act. So the, the public boards that we're all familiar with are are what that's dealing with. And then on page 30, you'll see the use of the term, which is, which is what, how this first use provision gets implemented. Section 20 of your bylaw, no development charge shall be imposed on any building owned by and used for the purposes of the City of Hamilton, a board of education, a local board, which is otherwise, and City Housing, Hamilton. So that is an exemption that is in your bylaw. And had my friend pursued her argument that her client constituted a board of education, she might have been able to convince you of that. She hasn't pursued it, and I don't think that's, would have been successful, because they're clearly not a board of education. But that's the reason why, under this bylaw, the first use doesn't generate a credit against their interior renovations. So that's the structure of the bylaw, and that's why DCs were payable and payable in, without getting a credit against them, because of the way your bylaw is structured. So it does constitute development, as I've shown you, and there is no credit available against it because the first use under your bylaw is an exempt use. And so I think that covers off that argument. If I just might have a moment. So I think I've covered off all of my friend's arguments today. And while I recognize that the committee may have some sympathy for the surprise, and, and the awkwardness of having this amount come to their attention late, I do recognize, first of all, there are forums where that sort of thing can be addressed, and it's not in front of this committee, it's not within your jurisdiction. And two, there are some countervailing things of due diligence and, and knowing. This is not a mysterious bylaw. People can read this and understand it, and people can seek advice on it before they commit to buying a property or preparing extensive renovation, building permits, and so on. So that, I think, tempers the, the sympathy of the situation in any event, but I'm not, I'm not trying to take away from, from Mr. Baird's plea to you. It's just, it, it, this is not the forum for it in my submission. So, subject to any questions you may have, those are my submissions.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. We open the floor now for some questions from the committee. Counselor Alex Wilson, and then Counselor Taddeuson.
Thank you. Through you, Chair, I think just hoping to repeat and confirm that I took away the arguments for some of this. And so, with respect to constituting development, the submission made was that anything that requires a building permit is development, and that also redevelopment is potentially, applies as of the change of use from a private school to a public school. So those are the two kind of submissions there. This is a development, there was a building permit, and there was a change of use. Am I correct?
Yes.
And then, just to untangle the retroactive piece, I think just a semantic or definitional change where you'd agree there was a lateness, or maybe a policy or an unfortunate error, but the fees themselves aren't retroactive, you said they stem from the authority of the bylaw. The bill was just delivered maybe late. Is that the argument there? Anything I'm missing in kind of your argumentation?
No, no, that's the essence of it. And in context, that the, that, that staff determination, staff doesn't have the authority to, they, they do their best to administer, but they don't actually have the authority to excuse somebody from payment of something that under the bylaw is due. So in that context, it's not retroactive. It is, it's unfortunate, it's not desirable, and should be minimized, but it will happen from time to time. And the structure of the act is that it, you're not forever excused from your bill simply because you didn't get it when you were supposed to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mark Taddeuson, please.
Just some clarification. You said that the, the private school doesn't represent a board, correct? Is that your, that's your take? So I'm just trying to understand. In my understanding of it, the board mediates between the province and the school. In the case of a private school, who mediates between the private school and the government? The ministry?
So, on the question of whether one global is a board of education, which was what the argument was going to be, but I don't think my friend pursued it. Board of education under your bylaw is a board as defined by the Education Act, and that board is one of those public boards, English, French, public, separate, there's four kind of categories of them, and a few weird categories on federal lands and, and reserves and so on. But basically, those are the categories. And those boards have extensive codes of, and you're familiar with the election of school board trustees, they get property taxes, they get provincial grants, and they can levy their own education development charges, although under the regulations, which are in the book, I can take them to you, they are not allowed to levy them against private schools, which is why this bill does not include any EDCs, because those EDCs that exist, that the city would collect on behalf of the school boards
Mr. Engel, perhaps you can define EDCs?
Oh, sorry, education, education development charges.
Thank you.
Which are a parallel, a parallel structure that school boards, or boards of education, get to impose on development, similar to the city. But under the regulation, which I think is in the last tab of tab eight, you'll see there's a regulation there with exemptions for certain types of properties, it's on page 145.
I'm looking at it right now.
A board shall exempt an owner from education development charges if one of the following conditions is satisfied, and you'll see if it's, if the building's for a purpose of a private school. So public schools cannot impose their form of development charges on private schools because the province has passed a regulation saying they can't. The $455,000 that's payable under your bylaw, does, that calculation does not include anything for the, for the education development charges. So just to be clear on, on that point. But, so this, this is a private school, it is, I don't know if licensed is the right word, you'll see in the agreed statement of facts, there's a BSID number, you need permission to run a private school from the ministry. But it's, that's a different thing than being a board of education and a school operated by a board of education.
Counselor Taddeuson, follow up.
Thank you. Through the Chair. You said that a private school is a different use of a building than a public school. I don't know. Can you, can you explain that more? That's a struggle for me.
Again, this goes back to the different contexts of building permit context, Planning Act context, and development charges context. The reason it's in the development charge context a different use is because a school that is owned and operated by a board of education under the bylaw is an exempt use. So moving from an exempt use to a non-exempt use, because a private school is not exempt under your bylaw, is a change of use that is addressed in your bylaw, which is when it comes to the conversion question, that you're moving, and you're getting, the availability of a credit is dependent on the first use, i.e. the prior use, not being exempt under the wording of your bylaw. So clearly, this is a development, it triggers a DC. That analysis requires you to look, saying it's an existing building, what credit is available? And there would normally have been a credit if, for example, had this been previously used as another private school, that would, under your bylaw, have been a non-exempt thing, it would have notionally have previously paid the city DCs, and there would have been a full credit because there's no change in the area of the building. But because the use is going from an exempt use to a non-exempt use, I agree with you for many purposes, you would say, it's a private school, it's a school, the other use was a school. In a Planning Act context, as to what the zoning bylaw would allow, that might well be right. I don't know your zoning bylaw, whether it distinguishes between types of schools. It can, but sometimes they don't. But in a development charge bylaw, Development Charge Act context, it is, and the structure of your act, it is a change.
And then just one final question. I might be able to be persuaded that every private school operates as its own board within the context of education, because if they have to, are the ones who have to deal with the ministry, that's the purpose of the board, is to deal with the ministry and make the, the changes between. So, so I'm struggling with that, but thanks if you can offer any final clarification on that.
Mr. Engel.
And thank you. I, I had, because my friend did not pursue that argument, I, I had prepared and included Education Act sections in there, and if it is of concern, I certainly can address it. So I've taken you to the definition, your bylaw of board of education means a board under the Education Act. So at tab seven of the document book, you'll see the definition of board, means a district school board. And I'm going to leave out school authority, because that's one of the outlier odd bits, but a district school board, and you'll see the definition of a district school board, and it means one of those four things, an English-language public district school board, an English-language separate district school board, French-language public district school board, or French-language separate district school board. And then you'll see there's also a definition of a private school, which my friend has agreed in the agreed statement of facts, that this is a private school. It's, it's a different thing. And then public board is a public district school board, or a public school authority, again, I'll ignore that. And over the page, you'll see the various definite, other definitions of boards, and Roman Catholic board. And then, school means a body of pupils that's organized, sorry, this is on page 137. Organized as a unit for educational purposes under the jurisdiction of the appropriate board. So the minister creates the boards, gives them a territory, can amalgamate, merge them. Boards, in this context, are a creation of the ministry. And so they are not private school boards. And I can take you through, there's other provisions here, but just, that's the structure of it. And they also get, they get legislative grants from the province, because the province creates them. Some may discuss the adequacy of those. They get property taxes, and they get to impose their own education development charges. So there's no way that this is a board of education, it is a private school, which is a separate thing under the Education Act.
Counselor?
Thank you for those answers. No more questions.
Any further questions from the committee? Counselor Alex Wilson, if you can take the chair for a second. So if I'm understanding Mr. Engel's position, the Education Act defines what a school board and it also defines what a private school is. It does not define a private school as a school board.
That's correct. Your bylaw calls it a board of education and exempts them, and it defines a board of education as a board under the Education Act as defined, and I took you to that definition. And that means a district school board, and then there's four types of those, and they are created and dissolved and merged and whatever by the ministry, and assigned a territory. So those, that, that's what constitutes a school, a board, and therefore a school board under your bylaw. And if the school is owned and operated by one of those, then your bylaw gives it an exemption.
Thank you for that. And I, Chair, just to clarify, it is the position of Mr. Engel in the city, that the Education Act and the development charges are the two acts that inform the development of our development charges by law. And when we're making decisions, we make decisions based on the bylaw and the two acts that enable that bylaw.
In this case, yes.
May I ask, Chair, the argument from Ms. Mider was that it's a retroactive application of a development charge. There is no doubt that the timeline on the payment of the missed DC charge by error of staff, if that's the case, that does not constitute a retroactive decision. DC charge was caught that it should have been applied, it was not applied, and the city has the right to then require the DC be paid.
Yes, so the, the imposition of the DC is pursuant to the bylaw, it's the bylaw that imposes it, staff are to administer that, and they don't always get it right, and it's unfortunate, but that is not But that is not legal. The legal consequence of that is not that a guillotine drops and it can never be sought or collected. If I missed it and I asked for it a day later, or I calculated and missed a zero and asked for it a week later, my friend's argument is that's retroactive and it's gone. My position and argument for the city is that is, that is an unfortunate administrative error, but it's not a legislative step. It's not done by someone with authority to bind the city in that respect. And it's, because my argument is consistent with the structure of the DC Act, which contemplates unpaid DCs being collected and secured after the issuance of a building permit. And if my friend was right, there would be never be a need for section thirty-two of the Act.
So, my last question, Chair, if I may. How does the DC Act address a caught or missed DC payment due in terms of the timeline? You said a moment ago, they caught it a day later, then they now apply the charge. If they caught it a week later, then they now apply the charge. How far back does the DC Act go? Perhaps it was a year later. Oops, we should have charged them this. We didn't. Can the city then recoup that DC? Is there any limitation on that time-wise?
I don't know. There's nothing expressed in the DC Act that speaks to that, and so I don't know the answer. I do, I can give you this context. I'd expect it would not be infinite. The general limitation period under the Limitations Act in Ontario for breach of contract or tort is two years from when you knew or ought to have known that you should sue for something. The tax roll piece, and I'm not an expert on putting arrears and other charges on people's tax rolls and what the municipal act says about that, but that may be where that time period is found as a mechanism. But the amount, the extinguishment of the amount is not something that is expressly saying if it's, you know, in the act, if it's not paid or sought or collected within one year, two years, five years, it's extinguished. There's no mechanism for that that I'm aware of in the DC Act. I suspect there would be some control of it under the municipal act and the tax provisions there as to how far back arrears of taxes can be sought or charges. Occasionally, if the city comes and has to cut your grass for you and says, we're going to put it on the tax roll, those are the sort of mechanisms, and I'm afraid I don't know what that time period is. But the time period we're dealing with here, again, not desirable. It's unfortunate, but it's well within, it's not out of time in that respect.
So, to sum up, it's your position that the DC Act and the DC bylaw as created by the city of Hamilton has been interpreted correctly by staff. They had an error. They caught the error, and therefore, the DC amount is owing to the city.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Any further questions from the committee? Thank you. I'll take the chair back. Thank you, Counselor Wilson, for your assistance. Okay, committee, seeing no further questions from the committee, at this point, I'd like a motion to retire to deliberate on this matter.
Mr. Chair, my apologies for the interruption. I believe I have a right of reply. Thank you.
My apologies.
No, no problem at all. So, Mr. Engel suggested that what our position is, is that if staff make an error, there is no way to recover from it. And that's absolutely correct. If staff makes an error, they do not have an opportunity under the DC Act to retroactively correct it and make the error, the problem for the taxpayer. The bylaws and legislation are interpreted strictly, and if you don't agree with the term strictly, based on Mr. Engel's submissions, which I say do, is still very much the approach to interpreting tax law, but you still have to interpret them based on their express language and in favor of the taxpayer. And there is nothing in the DC bylaw, as contrary to what Mr. Engel suggested, to allow a municipality to retroactively collect DCs. Mr. Engel took you to section thirty of the Act. The Development Charges Act. And that's at page, yep, section thirty-two, my apologies, page one thirty-five of the document book. He took you to this section to suggest that this is where the municipality gets its authority to correct its mistakes and apply DCs retroactively. And I heard the discussion here. There's nothing in here that suggests where, what kind of a timeframe that would be limited to. It's silent on that. And in my submission, that is completely incorrect interpretation of this section and the Act more generally. DCs are payable prior to building permit issuance. We've been over this, and that is clearly set out in section twenty-six, sub-one. In this case, there were no DCs to be paid prior to building permit issuance. They didn't exist. There was no DCs imposed prior to building permit issuance. Section thirty-two is limited to situations where the city imposes DCs prior to building permit issuance, such that they are known to the taxpayer, and the taxpayer does not challenge the imposition of the charge within ninety days. This section is limited to those situations where the taxpayer hasn't paid the full amount owing, that they were given notice of at the time of building permit issuance. And those situations where a developer is given notice at the time of building permit issuance and fails to pay for whatever reason, there's lots of provisions in the Act that allow for installment payments or payments at a later date after building permit issuance, that those sections don't apply in this case. And in those cases, if they don't follow through on the payment of DCs owing, that they were given notice of at time of building permit issuance, then the municipality has the authority to put those taxes, those DCs, on the tax roll. It's not an opportunity for the municipality to go three years later, oops, we missed paying, applying DCs and prior to building permit issuance, let's just throw it on the tax roll. No notice to the applicant, nothing, no opportunity for a complaint hearing, because we are well past ninety days from building permit issuance. So, it's just a completely incorrect interpretation of that section. It does not give way to retroactive application of DCs. And there was some mention about looking towards the municipal act in terms of determining what kind of a limit there is on imposing taxes. And in my submission, there's a lot of case law on this. You don't get to look to the municipal act to interpret the DC Act. The DC Act is a complete code. And again, it expressly says DCs are payable and to be imposed prior to building permit Mr. Engel suggested that the fact that there are two other examples of private schools that have paid DCs, or sorry, that did not pay DCs under very similar circumstances, where they took over a public school, did renovations, no DCs paid. He's telling you that that's not relevant to the matter before you, and that just because they were speeding doesn't mean we get to speed. Well, again, I think that this is a matter of the application of the DC bylaw. It's being applied inconsistently. It's being applied one way in three instances, being those other two examples, and when my client first got their building permit, and then subsequently, it's being applied Respectfully, Mr. Engel cannot simply assume that there has been an error in the other cases and not an error in this one. That's an assumption on which he has no, there's no evidence to support. The only evidence you have before you is that of Mr. Baird, that those properties were very similar, in fact, to what has happened here, and they did not pay DCs. That's the only evidence you have, and you have no reason to disregard that evidence. Mr. Engel suggested that there is no longer a strict construction of taxing statutes, and that the modern approach is to be applied, and that is where you read the words in their entire context. Well, that may be true in a general sense, and in this case, even when you do apply the modern approach to interpretation, you come to the same conclusion that DCs should have been collected prior to building permit issuance. They were not, and they cannot be retroactively sought by the municipality. And even if you do accept the strict interpretation of taxing legislation, that does not dismiss all of the principles of taxation that were presented to you in my submissions, my original submissions. It still holds that the taxes are to be interpreted against the taxing authority in favor of the taxpayer. They are, and they're not to be applied retroactively, and they are to be applied with certainty. Taxpayers are entitled to certainty, and the way the municipality is applying their DCs is the exact opposite of that. Mr. Engel also tried to distinguish those cases as applying here, the general principles of taxation, on account of the fact that we're dealing with a bylaw and not legislation. Well, I think that's a very technical distinction that's not of help, that's not of assistance. Those taxing principles apply to taxing authorities. The city is a taxing authority, and its bylaw, which must comply with the DC Act, is akin to legislation. That is how this taxing authority acts in administering its rights and obligations. So, therefore, I submit to you that all of the legislation, excuse me, all the case law that I put to you is very much relevant. All those principles do apply in this case and should not be, and should be given serious Now, Mr. Engel also took you to the definition of development in the bylaw and suggested to you that because it also cross-references back to section twelve, that therefore, which requires, so section twelve triggers DCs when a building permit is required. And Mr. Engel suggesting that because of that simple fact that it refers back to section twelve, where a building permit is required, therefore, you don't get to look at whether or not there was a substantial increase in usability of the building. That is, again, an incorrect interpretation of the definition of development. If it's simply, if all that mattered was that a building permit was issued, then the definition of development would be rendered, it would be redundant. There would be no need for that definition. You wouldn't have to define development if it was simply any of the events in section twelve being triggered. What the development definition does is it scopes, it limits the events or the permissions in section twelve. So, if you have to get a building permit under section twelve, it still has to meet the definition of development. It's in the preamble to section twelve that you meet the definition of development, which, again, speaks to increasing the usability of the building, and that didn't happen in In terms of the definition of redevelopment, again, this is not redevelopment, despite Mr. Engel's distinction between this being a private school and the former use being a public school. It is not, the definition of redevelopment, go there. It talks about redevelopment from one form of non-residential use to another form of non-residential use. And again, this is limited by the general definition of development, which requires the increasing usability of the space. Before you even get to that limitation, this use as a private school does not meet that definition of redevelopment. It is not a change from one form of non-residential to another form of non-residential. It was a school, and it still is a school. Non-residential use is not defined in this bylaw, but if, and we talked about this earlier, if one school had just moved in, not done any renovations, there would be no permit. And if there's no permit, there's clearly no redevelopment. And just because the former school was part of a school board, and the latter may or may not be, and we'll come back to that, does not render them different forms of non-residential development. The definition of school board and exempt parties goes to the user, not the use. That's an important distinction to make. If you had a not-for-profit operating a residential rental building, it would be exempt from the payment of DCs. If it then sold that building to a for-profit developer who just simply started renting out the units as is, that is not redevelopment. The first party was exempt from the payment of DCs because of the user, not the use. But in this case, they would still not have to pay DCs because there was no building permit. So, again, the distinction between school board, private school, public school, that is not a change in non-residential use. That definition simply goes to the user. And as Mr. Engel said, it has to do with who's paying taxes and whether or not they have to pay educational DCs. And in terms of school board, I did not suggest, and I want to be clear about this, I did not suggest that this private school does not meet the definition of school board. Instead, I was focusing on three issues that I thought were easier to understand and less complicated. But in my submission, this private school does, in fact, meet the definition of school board under the city's DC bylaw. So, a property operated by a board of education is exempt from the payment of DCs.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but my friend is now making a new argument that she didn't make originally, and she's doing it in reply. And in terms of procedural fairness, that's not normally allowed. So, well, I thought this issue was not being pursued by her any further. I know the committee asked some questions about it, and I was explaining what was in the book because of it, but I haven't had a chance to hear my friend's argument and respond to it, because she didn't make it.
I guess the challenge I have, though, is that it was brought up by a counselor, and therefore, it's now a part of the discussion. So, she's responding to that counselor's questions.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and I think that could properly be dealt with if necessary. I haven't heard what my friend's going to say about it, but by what lawyers refer to as sir reply, which is to say, if there's something new that I haven't addressed and the committee would benefit from, that I would have a chance to speak to it, and I think that would be inappropriate if I was given that opportunity. I may not use it, but I haven't heard what she's going to say.
So, let's cross that bridge after we hear what the counselor has to say.
Thank you, sir.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to be clear, I did not raise this at all in my submissions. I am actually responding directly to submissions that you heard from Mr. Engel, despite me not raising this as an issue, he did, so I'm responding. And I don't actually think that there is, it would be proper for sir reply, but I'll leave that in your hands.
My point is that the question originally was raised by Counselor Mark Taddeson, to which... to which this solicitor responded. So now you have an opportunity to speak to it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I completely agree and understand. I just wanted to be clear that before the question was even raised, in Mr. Engel's submissions, he did get into this. So if we look at, I'll just take you through the analysis here. You look at the definition of school, of Board of Education in the DC bylaw. And as you know, it says it means a board as defined in Subsection 111 of the Education Act. So we go to that section of the Education Act, at Page 136 of the document book. And it says, "A board means a district school board or a school authority." So I'm going to go to the definition of school authority. That's on the next page, the bottom of the next page. And it says, "A school authority means," and then if you flip over to F, "a board of a Protestant separate school." This is a Protestant separate school, and it has a board. So therefore, it would meet the definition of Board of Education under the DC bylaw. And that would exempt it from the payment of DCs altogether as well. But I don't even think we get there, Mr. Chair. I've provided my three reasons why I think, just on its face, the bylaw has been applied incorrectly. And I don't know that you need to get into the esoteric analysis of that definition. But of course, those are my submissions if you choose to go down that path. And that concludes my reply. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Engel, you asked for an opportunity to respond to that question.
Yes, the only new thing was my friend pointing to the board of a Protestant separate school. And I don't, it's not included in the definitions and so on that you have, the Act. And so I haven't reviewed that. But I'm checking quickly on my phone if there's anything I can assist you with in terms of whether that's a defined term or not. Because again, there are times when there are terms of art within the Education Act that shouldn't be taken out of context. And I just don't know whether that's one of them. And I don't see a definition of a Board of a Protestant separate school. So I can't help you any further with that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Meter, for your final submission. Are there any final questions from the committee to Ms. Meter based on her final submission? Give me one second, please. I have no further questions. So at this point, I would like to have Mr. Hart introduce himself so that everyone is aware who Mr. Hart is. So if you could please introduce yourself for us, please. Put your microphone on.
Yes, I'm John Hart. And I'm the lawyer for the committee today. And I will be assisting it in matters of legal interpretation in the making of their decision.
Thank you. And the reason I wanted to introduce Mr. Hart is so that everyone knows he's our independent counsel of this committee, so he'll be providing us advice when we go into deliberate and answer our questions prior to us making a decision. That being said, at this particular point in time, I'd like a motion to retire this committee to deliberate. Moved by Counselor Jeff Beatty, seconded by Counselor Alex Wilson. All those in favor? Thank you very much. I now ask everyone, with the exception of committee members and their counsel, to please leave the room. You'll be called upon to return when the committee has finished its deliberations. Anyone that is logged on to WebEx that is not party to our discussions in deliberation, the clerk is now going to close those access points. WebEx is really meant for the city staff and the council or committee. Thank you. We'll have a five-minute recess for nature break, please. Thank you. Am I ready, clerk? Okay. I'd like a motion to reconvene the meeting. Please move by Counselor Alex Wilson, seconded by Counselor Jeff Beatty. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you, that is unanimous. Okay. Upon review of all the evidence presented today and a review of the Development Charges Act and the City of Hamilton DC bylaw, this committee rules on behalf of the complainant that an error was made in the application of the bylaw, and no DC charges are applicable as a result. The decision is effective today with a written decision to follow. And the written decision will be forwarded to the parties shortly. With that, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting, please. Moved by Counselor Alex Wilson, seconded by Counselor Mark Taddison. All those in favor adjourning? Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your time today.
Thank you, Chair.